Call the March 7th DeSoto City Council meeting to order. We'll start with roll call, please.
Daniels?
Yes.
Lane?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
Murdock?
Here.
Ritter?
Thank you, council.
Everyone's present, mayor.
Okay. I would ask you all to please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first item tonight is our consent agenda. We have the approval of minutes from the council meeting of February 21st, approved pay ordinance 849, and approved maintenance agreement for excess land around sewer plant. Any discussion of any item on the consent agenda? If not, a motion, please.
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion of the motion? If not, roll call.
Lane?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion carried.
Our next item is called a public. Members of the public are welcome to use this time to comment about any matter relating to city business not listed on tonight's agenda. The comments that are discussed under called a public may or may not be acted on by the council during this meeting. There's a four-minute time limit. Please stand and wait to be recognized. Anyone wish to address the council tonight? Yes, sir.
Yes, I'd like to address you all. I'd like to put an end on your city crew on what a nice job they did clearing the streets and everything. They've just done a wonderful job. When I got ready to come to town, the roads were cleared and those guys, you could hear them working all night long. I'd also like to thank you, council, for inviting all these businessmen here and building all these new houses and everything. And the banker here, I tell you, he's done a wonderful job on his project. And I just want to thank you guys for getting your heads together and inviting these rich people out here. It's a hard thing, you know. You'll have money coming in here for the brick structure that built these new houses and things. It's always a pleasure to drive around DeSoto. I've been here since '51. I'll tell you what, things are really looking up. We're going to get on that map this year. We'll be tops ahead anymore. Be just like Oldland Park. Well, thank you all so much. You're doing a good job, and I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Paul. Anyone else wish to address the council tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Old business, we have none. So number four, new business. A, consider actions relating to the formation of a TIF district in Commerce Park. Patrick?
Yes, council. As explained in the memo that was included in the packet, really, the only, well, the first item we have is a funding agreement. And you'll remember with the apartment project, and there have been several projects we've done this with, and this is essentially just an agreement with the developer that they will deposit funds into an account that will be available to pay bond council fees and financial advisor fees as they're incurred by the city. So that item, there were some revisions requested that actually I haven't had a chance to look at, but the way I prepared the motion would just be to authorize us to staff to negotiate and finalize that funding agreement. I don't think there's probably any big item other than we normally, I think, request $10,000 on deposit. And I think the developer has proposed that they have on deposit $5,000, which I think is something you approved in connection with the apartment project. So if no one has a big issue with that, I don't think any of these other changes will be any big deal. Outside of that, the other item that you have is a resolution, simply scheduling a public hearing that will be at the April 11th meeting, I believe, is what we had that for.
Eighteenth?
Yeah, that's, thanks for the correction. And at that point, you'll hear more about the project, and at that point, you'll make a decision on whether you want to approve the district. So this is just really setting a public hearing.
Okay. Questions for Patrick on the funding agreement or the resolution?
And Kevin Wimpy from Gilmore and Bell is here as well, if you have any questions for him.
Yeah, I mean, I guess some questions or some discussion. So I understand, you know, this is a process where we authorize staff to begin the discussion. That's the way it gets going. My guess, my question is, this hasn't had any exposure yet to planning commission, correct? So we would be creating, I'm wondering if by going all the way to setting a public hearing, we might be prejudicing the planning commission a bit on the council's position on the project in broad terms. Because essentially, first, we're looking at a TIF district in, on an industrial zone, but it states in the application that it's for uses that are other than the way it's currently zoned. So the whole thing has to flow through a planning process. A lot of times, you hit the TIF thing maybe running in parallel with plating or rezoning, but we don't have a, we haven't got it zoned in a way that's consistent with what the TIF application is. And so I'm a little concerned that, has the hearing, has the public hearing date been set in a way that it would make itself through the planning process without prejudging to the planning commission what the council's position is on the project?
Well, correct from wrong, but as part of the TIF process, the planning commission, even if there wasn't a rezoning, the planning commission would weigh in on, isn't that right, Kevin? That they have an approval that they will take as part of the process. But this action, creating the district, really doesn't commit the city to anything. Really, your commitment becomes when you enter into a redevelopment agreement, just as we did with Harps, where it's negotiated what percentage of taxes the city will, you know, agree to, what increment the city will agree to give back to the project, essentially. So that's really where the nuts and bolts of the negotiation come up.
True. But in the application where it asks for, you know, what the uses are, identify construction, to determine construction, neighborhood retail, office medical, is inconsistent with the current land use plan and the current zoning. Again, I'm just wanting to make sure that, you know, the planning commission is doing its independent arms-length job without some prejudgment or predisposition by the council that says, we expect it to go this way by already acting on this and already having set a hearing date. And I'm not saying this that I disagree with the project in broad terms. I'm just wanting to make sure that we're not preempting the planning commission's independent job and independent judgment. So I guess that setting the date concerns me a bit, because that almost says, well, we're running a course regardless of how the planning commission would assess the change in use, you know, change in use relative to the comprehensive plan and change in zoning to accommodate something that would generate revenue that would pay a TIF district back. That's my concern.
This is scheduled to go to the planning commission on the 26th of March.
The rezoning on the 26th of March, which will predate the hearing by three weeks then.
But, and that's a public hearing on the rezoning?
Yeah.
That's advertised in, okay.
And Patrick, I'll just add the separate and apart from your zoning process at the city level, on a normal project, with TIF, the planning commission involvement that you referenced occurs after this, the TIF district's created by resolution, which is scheduled for that April 11th meeting. At that time, the planning commission, per state statute, has to make a consistency finding that the TIF plan prepared by the developer is consistent with the overall comp plan in the city. So that's by state statute under the TIF Act as well.
And Kevin, I may mention too, and not to blame it on the, but as the project came to us, it's very, I think Travis will indicate too, they are in a sort of wanting to get this moving as quickly as possible due to other commitments. So definitely at the staff level, we're not.
And I wouldn't want to hold that back. I would just want to make sure that it's clear that, at least from my perspective, that it's clear that by acting on this does not predetermine, have a predetermined expected outcome from the planning commission, and that they are to do their independent job. That's what I would expect.
That's a good point.
Questions, comments? Good point, yeah.
I understand.
Mike, you need to explain to the council that way, I mean, to the planning commission that way, so it wouldn't be any bias effect to that.
Yeah.
Through something that Patrick writes on that, so that when Brad brings it to their attention, that that statement there is correct to.
Yeah, that they're supposed, still supposed to do their job.
Correct, yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
If there's no more discussion, does somebody want to make a motion to authorize the staff to negotiate the final funding agreement?
Yes, I'll make a motion. We authorize staff to negotiate and finalize the attached funding agreement.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, roll call, please.
Michael?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
And you, council, motion carried.
Okay, and then we need a motion to approve Resolution 1088 to schedule the public hearing on the establishment of the district.
I will make that motion. We approve Resolution 1008, scheduling public hearing on establishment of redevelopment district for the TIF project.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second. Thank you for correcting my number issue. Roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Ritter? Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion carried.
All right. Moving on. Item B, consider bond documents for 91st Street Extension and Lexington and Commerce Signal modifications. Who's this? Is this Patrick or is this you, Mike?
Patrick had the.
Yeah, and probably just largely turn it over to Kevin Wimpy. That's actually why he's here this evening, so we'll let him earn his keep. Thank you, Kevin.
Good evening, Kevin Wimpy from Gilmore and Bell. Yeah, there are two bond-related things on the agenda tonight, and the first is the follow-up to authorize the projects for the issuance of GO bonds. And you probably recall from last month, the main trafficway ordinance was adopted. So to fund these street projects within the city, it's a two-part, two-part act under the statute where you designate your main trafficways, and then here, adopt a resolution authorizing GO bond funding for those projects. And they're the two projects there, 91st Street and then Lexington and Commerce Traffic Signal. So the amounts of projects descriptions are in that resolution, and just simple majority, pass it to allow us to go fund these projects with GO bonds. And then the second resolution is sale resolution or go-to-market resolution. And this simply authorizes us to finalize the preliminary offering document for the bonds. We've already been through the rating call, and we suspect we'll get the official rating next week from the rating agency. So we'll finalize that process. And then on the day of the next council meeting, two weeks from today, we'll take bids that morning on these bonds and come to you that evening with those bids for you all to authorize us to issue those bonds to the little bidder at that time.
Any questions from council? A motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize Resolution Number 1009, authorizing the improvement or re-improvement of certain main trafficways within the city of DeSoto, Kansas, and providing for the payment of the costs thereof.
A second. Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Murdock?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And you, council, motion carried.
Okay, someone want to do the next?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to authorize Resolution Number 1010, authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation improvement bonds, Series 2019, of the city of DeSoto, Kansas.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any discussion of the motion? If not, roll call.
Lane?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Michael? Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion carried.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. See you in a couple of weeks.
Item C, consider five-year cars application.
Yes, council, this is something that's relatively routine. We do this every year. The cars program is a county program that takes sales tax from gas, gas, gas sales tax, pools it, provides a degree of county funding, and then redistributes that out to the cities for improvements to arterial or collector roads. We've taken advantage of this program many times in the past. It's a good program for us. It's one of those things, every few years, we'll get a project on the list. 91st Street this year, we've got about $850,000 allocated from this program. So what they want us to do is submit a five-year program where we intend to request cars funding in the next five years. So we do that each year. Usually, it's relatively routine, but this year, the only item on the list is the roundabout at 91st and Lexington. And you'll remember, that issue came up, we discussed last fall, and it's in the draft version of our CIP, which we're currently holding off on formalizing that until we get through this bond rating question that we've had related to the issuance of the amount of debt that's in that draft CIP. So it's, it would be, you know, approving this application would be another baby step toward committing to that project. The cars program in itself, you know, obviously, this doesn't obligate us to do any project ever, but they do rely on it to kind of set their future budgets. And so when we submit that, we want to be relatively certain that this is the path we're going on. For that reason, they asked for a resolution from the governing body to accompany the application. So that's what's, that's the action item tonight, is that resolution that indicates your knowledge of and acceptance of the application. And our application only consists of the one project, about a million-dollar project. We're asking for about $525,000 for cars, which would be half of the construction cost of the roundabout. And currently in the CIP, the construction year is 2021. So if everything goes exactly like the draft CIP is now, we'll be designing next year and building in 2021. So I'll stop there and answer any questions.
Questions for Mike? I got one. It just came to me.
Okay. Yours are always pretty good.
Why didn't we apply for cars for our overlay or, Chip Seal doesn't qualify, right?
No, Chip Seal's not enough.
So that's, we could have done, perhaps, then we could have done.
Oh, Kill Creek?
Kill Creek Road with.
U-Bass?
U-Bass, or does U-Bass even qualify?
U-Bass just became eligible this year, so it does qualify.
But we would have had to postpone the work a year to have gotten it on the list.
Yeah, true. Yep, yep.
I mean, it just came to me, I was thinking, you know, the car, I'm not listening, I'm listening to see Mike, but I got other things going in my head, so I'm thinking, well, Kill Creek Road was a cars road, why didn't?
Yeah. The other thing about the cars program is the 80% rule. So in the administration of the program, there's a policy that they have that at least 80% of the sales tax that's generated by any particular entity, any particular city, should be returned to that city and prioritized above any sort of competitive process that they have to select projects. So DeSoto's, in terms of 80% rule, the 91st Street project puts us at about 150%.
So we have a couple of years to wait.
Yeah, we might need to wait, you know, otherwise, we're competing in some of those dollars.
We didn't have anything for seven years prior to that, so I think we had a negative balance coming in.
We did, yeah.
Right. And it works a little bit that way. I mean, they'll look at, have you got your share?
No, I got us on a sidetrack.
Well, I think the other comparison to that, though, is I think they'll look at, you know, a roundabout's a much more progressive use of transportation improvements as opposed to a maintenance project. And so, you know, when we, in the favor that we get, if you will, I think, you know, a roundabout and the way we're addressing a traffic solution will at least be viewed favorably as a progressive, a progressive way to improve transportation.
Long-term.
Long-term. It's a long-term solution, so the money's going to a long-term solution.
No light bulbs to replace on a roundabout.
All right. Any questions about this project, as posed by? And how about a motion to?
The resolution.
Author, approve the resolution. Is there a number?
1011, council.
I'll make a motion. We authorize Resolution 1011, the five-year city-county-street improvement program.
A second. Okay, we have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion carried.
Item D, consider replat of Oak Country Estates Lot 78, fourth plat.
All right, thank you, mayor and council. What you have before you is sort of a bit of a step back in time. When we, when the city planted this, and I didn't actually look up the date when that was actually approved, we had included, or was mistakenly shown on the plat, a 75-foot building setback line on the final plat. So you flash forward to today, when Mr. Pinkley went to our building official and asked for a building permit to put on his accessory building. Steve looked it up and said, well, wait a second, you can't do this. You're going to be in the building setback lining of, well, you're in an RO district, should only be 50 feet. But the plat actually said 75 feet. So after Steve brought that to my attention, we kind of got our heads together and then talked to Mike a little bit, and said, we probably ought to just go through a whole replat process, which is bring it to planning commission, get that approved, and go through this whole process so we can basically erase the 75-foot line from the plat. So that's kind of where we're at today. This will not change any streets or roads. There will be no impact, any utilities. It is simply, as I stated, removing the building setback line from the plat. And I also have included in your packet the application, the new plat, and then also the plot plan that shows where the, how actually now their, the building will become in conformance with the plat. So with that, I will stand for any questions that you all may have.
Any questions for Brad on the application?
Just curiosity, when was that platted?
Early 90s.
Early 90s. So we can't blame, we can't blame Mike for missing that on the plat.
Or you, you weren't the surveyor.
No, no, no.
Yeah, I think we're both in the clear.
Hang the Rockaway plat, I think. Allen Brand Drews.
I'll make a motion, then we accept the easement, send right away, as shown on the replat of Lot 78.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Daniels?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Yes.
And the mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, mayor.
One thing, mayors, if you will, stop by after the meeting and sign the plat. The app can be most pleased to get this taken care of, so.
Get started.
Good job, Terry Youngman. You're doing a good job.
All right. Item E, consider ordinance 2459 revising city code relating to the DeSoto Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Yes, council, this really just sort of dovetails Jay Garvin. I think Mike, as well, worked with the park board to sort of come up with a clearer definition of their role moving forward. And I prepared the bylaws with Jay for them to consider, and they approved them. And the bylaws, just the organizational purpose was just a bit different than what was in our city code, so I thought it best that we revise the city code to make those consistent. So really, this is just a motion to amend the city code to make those slight provisions to what was in the existing code.
Questions regarding the proposed bylaws? Someone want to make a motion to approve ordinance 2459?
移到 moved.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
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 Ritter? Yes.
Michael? Yes.
Thank you, mayor. Motion carried.
Okay. Executive session. Anything on tonight's executive session?
Nope.
Okay. We're to the end pretty quick here. Advisory reports.
Yeah, not bad. I have, I have a couple of things.
There we go.
Really, just a couple of future meeting requests. The planning commission's been working on the comprehensive plan pretty extensively the last couple of months. I think it's time for the council and planning commission to get together, have a workshop on that document before the final chapter is written. So we have everything except the kind of the conclusion wrap-up chapter written in draft form, the future land use map, you know, all the goals and objectives, all that's in draft form. And we're hoping if the council is largely available before the next council meeting on March 21st, we could start the work session at 6:00 PM, possibly move the start time of the regular council meeting back to 7:30, so that'd give us roughly 90 minutes in a work session with the planning commission. So ask if availability for that, willingness, desire?
21st.
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 March 21st, starting at 6 o'clock. I can, I can make that.
I'm available.
Yes.
Okay. Laura, I know you might have trouble getting here on time, but.
I'll make it shortly after.
All right, well, good. We'll do that.
So do we need a motion to amend our, or to adjust our starting time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Patrick, yeah, that'd be, that'd be good.
Okay.
We'll make a motion. We amend our start time to 6 o'clock on the council meeting of the 21st of March.
And provide for the work session.
To provide for the work session with planning commission?
And that'll start at 6.
Do we, do we have to mention this council meeting starting at 7:30 in that same motion?
Yes. Sorry, I thought you did.
And that the council meeting will start at 7:30 instead of 7.
There we go.
I second that motion.
All right, did you get all that, Lana?
I think so.
Okay.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you, Anna.
You're pro, mayor.
All right.
Is that a public meeting?
Yes.
We don't have enough to die here. Well, I think the planning commission meeting, and it seems like the CIP plan was a lot further, not that ready. Planning commission meeting?
No, we're talking about the comprehensive plan.
That's what he was talking about.
Yeah, the comprehensive plan. You said there's a lot of things you needed to amend, take out, and adjust.
Yeah.
You got all that done the last week?
Yeah. Well, we don't think we just sit around doing nothing, do we?
It was just one chapter.
It was just one chapter.
Well, you had mentioned there was a lot of things that didn't need to be adopted.
True.
Several chapters needed to be amended or taken out, is that correct?
Not full chapters taken out, several elements of those chapters. And that's part of this workshop.
That's part of what we're, yeah, going to look at. But, yeah, we have, we have, we've done quite a bit of work on it, actually, this week.
Okay, you know, it just surprised me based on last week's meeting, I just wanted to make sure I was.
Yeah.
Very incorrect. Thank you.
Yep. We're not as good as Paul thinks we are, but don't tell him. Don't tell him.
I'm proud of you guys, you worked together to get it done, best council meeting I've ever had.
We're gonna put Paul as a regular council agenda item. Okay, council, the second thing I have for you is, um, we, we talked about wanting to, um, schedule a, a council retreat, you know, maybe an off-site, full day or half-day council retreat, similar to the one we did in two thousand and seven when we were putting together the strategic plan. I know, um, Kevin and Rob were not on the council at that time, so they didn't get the opportunity to work with, uh, Jeannie Lauer, um, who was our facilitator for that day, and she came to us through Johnson County Community College. Um, I've reached out to them again to see if Jeannie was still doing this and what her availability was, and she has, uh, five days in April, three days in May, four days in June where she could, um, provide that one-day facilitation. Um, just wanted to get your feelings on that. We don't need to schedule it right now. I'll send out a doodle poll because that will be at least a half-day commitment. Um, I think before we did a full day, uh, the last time we did this, um, she's got a cost, a flat rate of, uh, about thirty-four hundred dollars for a full day, and that would include, you know, some pre-work, um, direction on, you know, the, um, the, the agenda and what we need to cover, a full-day facilitation, and then a report of key findings after. It was very helpful to us in the strategic planning process, so, um, just wanna just get a little bit of feedback on whole, full day or half-day, um, and then is everybody okay with that price, something around thirty, thirty-three hundred dollars? We, we'll find it in the, in the budget. And then, uh, April, May, June, I, I would think the sooner the better, um, but evidently she's, uh, booked up through March at this point, so the first date would be the second week in April. So I'll turn it over to you for direction.
Are we talking weekday or weekend or what?
Uh, either one. The last time we did it on a Saturday.
Saturday, right.
I think.
Was it a full day?
Pretty, three quarters, maybe half.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, we kinda left a little bit early.
We got, we quit, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had lunch, I guess, right? So it was, it was more than a morning thing.
So then more than just.
The, the second weekend of April's the leadership summit and mayor's conference for the league.
No, I'll be gone.
And I'll be gone that weekend.
You're talking the week of the eighth?
No, the second weekend of April.
Oh, is this gonna be on a weekend?
If it, if it is a weekend, I mean.
Or is it weekday?
I'm sorry, none of these day, I'm looking at these dates now, they're all weekdays.
Okay.
None of these are weekends, but I can, we can ask if that's, if that's something we need to do.
Weekdays fine with me.
I'm out most of the first two weeks of April.
Okay, so we've got a date, twenty-fifth and thirtieth of April. Well, let me, I'll send out the poll.
Yeah, you set up the doodle poll.
Yeah.
I think every, everybody's comfortable with the fee and the, the thought of having it, just whether, let's figure out when we can make it work.
Okay, well.
The thought of a weekend, there's too less people over there at college on the weekend.
Yeah, parking kind of comes into it.
Parking is a problem over there during the week if you've been over there recently. So if we can do a weekend, it'll leave a lot of the parking and hassle.
I'll ask about the parking. I think, um, I think there's special permits that can give us. I'll send out the poll, and then when I do, I'll include in that email some ideas about just areas of discussion, you know, goals, objectives, those are kinda easy areas to hit, but I, you know, if we have any, cause the first thing's gonna happen is Jeannie, uh, Jeannie and myself will get together and talk about kinda the agenda for the day, and so I kinda wanna hear from you guys about topics we wanna hit, things we wanna cover during the retreat. Okay, I'll get, I'll get that email out.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it for me, mayor, thanks.
Patrick?
Nothing for me.
Brad?
Uh, no, I'm, good.
All right. Lana?
This week, I will be attending and presenting at the Kansas Corps Association, and I appreciate the opportunity to do that. Also, my presidential duties are starting to pick up, even though I'm not sworn in yet, but I have four trips scheduled. Uh, one of those will be to England in June, representing IIMC and, um, of course, my city, so I have pins, getting those ready to go to put with my business card, so I, again, I just can't say enough how much I appreciate the support, not only from Mike, but from Patrick, who covers the minutes for me, as you know, when I'm not here. So just once again, I really appreciate the support from all of you. Thank you for helping.
Thank you, Lana. Council comments. Kevin, would you like to start tonight?
Uh, sure, I will give a Economic Development Council report, um, from the previous board meeting, just to keep council up speed. The, uh, EDC has approved its budget for twenty nineteen. Uh, EDC's operating on about a seventy-two thousand dollar budget. Um, about two-thirds of that is payroll, so that kinda gives you a feel for how much money is available for our Economic Development Corporation to do economic development pursuits for, so it's a pretty, pretty lean, pretty thin, um, operation, but, um, but they're getting a lot done. Uh, but that budget's approved. Probably the biggest thing to report is that the, uh, EDC and the chamber are also going to do a retreat. So this is gonna be a, a joint, kinda strategic planning session, um, have a joint work session to figure out how the two organizations work together since they share a, uh, an exec, um, and share a lot of, a lot of budget, uh, expenditures, uh, office space, that kinda thing. So that is gonna be May first, and it's gonna be held out at Cedar Valley Forest here in, uh, in DeSoto. It's gonna be moderated, uh, by Mary Birch. So if any of you know Mary Birch, she was the longtime chamber exec for the Overland Park Chamber and probably the genesis of that chamber organization, and so she's got a really good, strong history in how, uh, chamber organizations work and does a lot of this consulting-type work, um, as well. So I think she's gonna be real beneficial to talking about the organizations, um, in terms of how they can function, how they operate, how they add value, how they serve their members, um, and how each of the, each of the entities, um, helps the community grow either through existing businesses or, or business attraction and job growth. So that's kind of a big deal. That's the first time that, that type of collaboration has, has happened in years and years and years. Uh, the EDC is, uh, commissioning a community housing assessment, so this will be the first time the chat, the community housing assessment's been updated in probably a decade, Mike? Something like that? Uh, they have money from, um, Kansas City Power and Light, Westar, um, whatever the combined organization is called now, so that's helping to fund that, and I believe that should be happening through April and May, something like that.
It's already started then, or?
I think they're just. It's been authorized. Yeah, the chat's, the chat's been authorized, uh, funded, and I think the, the hope is to have a report out in, in May or so, but that'll be a good tool for us to have in terms of knowing what our housing situation is, particularly as we're talking about, um, how we're using incentives, right, for broad, in broad terms, but also in particular for housing. Um, and I think that's it. So budget, uh, strategic planning session, that's an all-day deal. Uh, it's nine in the morning till four in the afternoon, so it should be a big work session and, uh, the chat.
Okay.
Thank you.
Lori?
I don't have anything, mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing other than happy anniversary for forty-eight years to Councilman Lane.
Thank you.
Linda. Thank you, Rob. Kevin?
I don't have anything else that's in that pothole that you keep complaining about at the exit ramp.
At the ramp, they keep throwing a little bit in it.
Yeah, it's good enough. It was pretty deep the other day. I don't know if it's us or them.
So is that the one on the westbound off-ramp?
Yeah.
There's a similar one on the eastbound off-ramp. Uh, we threw some coal patch in it a couple of weeks ago. We'll just go do that again. It's made about three freeze stall cycles.
Right. Hopefully, we're done with those, huh? Probably not, but.
Nothing else, man? Nothing for me, mayor, go ahead.
All right. I've got a couple of things I wanted to talk about. Um, so to tag on to what Kevin said, last night at our council mayor's, no, Wednesday night, yeah, that was last night, um, the, uh, United Community Services came to lobby the mayor's group to, um, promote a county-wide housing study to look at the affordable housing, housing that folks could afford, so they're wanting to do a county-wide, um, study that would be similar to what we're doing with our community housing, uh, assessment, and, um, so I don't know how that will, if ours would be ready, I would, uh, you know, obviously we could share that with them, but I, probably they're a little further behind, um, cause they're just trying to get garner support for, and it sounded like there was a lot of support amongst the communities. I don't know if, if we would participate, if we're already spending money on, uh, um, this community housing assessment, but it might provide some valuable information. What they're, what they're trying to get at is how much, two steps. So the first thing is to define the problem, how much, uh, what stock is available, at what prices, um, and what level of income do you need to afford that? And then what can we do as a community, as a region, to promote housing that, um, folks that work here in jobs that don't pay a hundred thousand dollars a year can afford to live here, so that like our younger people that have just come out of school and are just getting started in their careers can live in the community that they're working in? So, um, I think it'll be a, an ongoing project after the initial study to, to, uh, create some sort of task force to look at solutions to provide real, uh, ideas to communities like us that we can try and implement through our planning zoning and, and setting whatever it is to, to, um, look for ways that we can have housing that will fit all of the income brackets for the folks that, um, work in our community, so.
Who did you say is advocating that?
That was the United Community Services of Johnson County. So we, we.
Yeah, we budgeted.
Budget money for, to them every year for.
It's about twenty-three hundred, twenty-four hundred dollars, just as a donation.
And, and they're looking at this for, um, they're championing this as a county, as an organization for, to try and, try and get all the communities and the county together to fund a, uh, a regional study, so they'll be, they'll be working on that. So I'm assuming in the future they'll probably be coming here to present, to ask, to present their ask.
For money.
For, for what that, yeah, right.
Bottom one.
Yeah. Um, so that was at the mayor's meeting, uh, and then, let's see, real quick, I went to, um, a stakeholder meeting, that was last Friday, right?
Yeah.
Right. For the, um, outer loop highway, the next highway, the next loop, um, KDOT's hired a consultant to freshen up. It was a study, um, it's probably ten years old now, um, the five-county study, if that rings a bell. Um, it was, uh, it studied a, a number of loops or a number of routes inside the, inside the community, uh, county or the counties, but then it also looked at a, a new connecting loop that went from Peculiar, Missouri at seventy-one, uh, across through Edgerton, around, along the edge of Sunflower, crossed to Tongonoxie, up to I-70, and then ending in Leavenworth County up by Leavenworth. Um, that outer loop, um, KDOT has HNTB, um, looking at the traffic numbers again, and then analyzing it as if it were, um, a toll route, if, considering tolls. Um, I don't, it, the initial, um, findings, um, didn't look promising for it to be a, uh, a viable toll route. Um, as a four-lane, they were gonna look at if it were just built, uh, two lanes, one lane in each direction, how that might affect it, and then what segments, some segments were, were more viable than others, and if, if more, certain segments, um, were more viable, what, what those would be and, and, um, how soon those might be viable, so that'll be coming, the next stakeholder meeting will be in April, so they'll bring back the results of the two-lane study and, and these, um, looking at combining segments and partial segments, so.
They don't have any lines on any maps, do they?
They have a fat line on the map, but, yeah, there's nothing real. Right, and it, right now, it goes, um, you know, in, in our area, it, it takes advantage of the Sunflower property, and so it, but it's like at the west edge of it, uh, looks like it kinda hooking into the, um, what is that interchange right there at the west side of Sunflower? That's, uh, not, not, is that Edgerton Road, right? Yeah. Evening Star, yeah, the evening, so it's, it's crossing K-ten right around Evening Star and then heading north across the river, so. That was last week. I, um, it's probably a ways out, you know, I mean, it's nothing imminent, but it was interesting. Um, and I asked them to come talk to Mike to get more information about our plans for our, our future expansion plans in that area and, and what we might wanna let them know. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to share was the, uh, appraiser was here this week, Paul Welcome, and he shared the appraisal report. Our values are up six-point-eight percent. Something like that. For our community.
DeSoto.
DeSoto. About half of that is new construction, half of that is reappraisals, or, um, so.
Yeah, that's another good, strong, good, strong report.
Yeah, six-point-eight, including new construction, and it's split about half and half.
Yeah. Last year, it went up a little bit more.
About eight percent last year.
Yeah, uh, but eighty-five percent of it were reevaluations. So we're picking up on the new construction, which helps with our tax-led equation. Um, so that was, it was a good, it was a good report. It's good news.
And that's, I think, all I, oh, no. I'm gonna be a mystery reader tomorrow for the fourth grade at Starside. A mystery reader. Yeah, so don't tell anybody.